Good evening. I will call this regular Township Council meeting of May 17, 2022 to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk, and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 22, 2021, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on December 28, 2021, and the Newark Star-Ledger on December 27, 2021. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Public Access Channel 21 at 7:00 PM Sundays and Wednesdays, and are also available for viewing at www.parcipany.net. Would you all join me in the flag salute?
By plenty of agents that reside in the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Ms. Graniani.
Here.
Mr. Musello.
Here.
Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. DePiro.
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor James Barbario. We have Business Administrator Fred Carr, Township Attorney Michael Silogia, and Township Clerk Colette Madden. Council President, we have a quorum. We may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, June 14, 2022 at 7:00 PM, our Agenda Meeting, and June 21, 2022 at 7:00 PM, our Regular Meeting. Approval of minutes, Mr. Neglia.
Yes. Reorganization Meeting 1/5/22, Agenda Meeting 1/5/22, Regular Meeting 1/18/22, Agenda Meeting 2/1/22, Regular Meeting 2/15/22, Agenda Meeting 3/1/22, Regular Meeting 3/15/22, Agenda Meeting 4/5/22, and Regular Meeting 4/19/22. Motion to approve the minutes by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Graniani. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Graniani.
Yes.
Mr. Musello.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Presentations and reports, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Jeanne and I graduated high school back in, I'm not going to say the day, Parcipiny Hills, remember?
I know, right?
Only five years. All right. Come on up. Time, remember? No problem. Can't see. I don't need this in front of me. Yeah, I do, if you want to hear me. I'll be doing a proclamation whereas every day more than 110 Americans are killed by gun violence, along with more than 200 Americans who were shot and wounded, and on average there are only, there are nearly 16,000 gun homicides every year, and whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries, and whereas New Jersey has 439 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 4.9% deaths per 100,000 people, and whereas municipalities across the nation, including the towns of Parcipiny Troy Hills, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions, and whereas protecting public safety in the community is a service, a mayor's highest responsibility, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories, and whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe, and whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than two years of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicides and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence, whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at the age of 15. On June 3, 2022, to recognize the 25th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, people across the United States will recognize Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute of Hadiya Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims, and whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, the color hunters wear to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and whereas anyone can join the campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 3, the first Friday in June in 2022, to help raise awareness about gun violence, and whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, I, James R. Barbario, the Mayor of the Township of Parcipiny Troy Hills, hereby proclaim the first Friday in June, June 3, 2022, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support efforts to prevent the tragic events of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Date is the 17th day of May, 2022. That's for you. We didn't have a big enough folder for it, but we'll get you some for it, but I would, I'm going to put you to work, Joe, if you have a minute.
Thank you.
Just stay right here, because I'm sure we're going to need it.
I'd like a picture.
I'm also working for the flag.
Oh.
You don't mind taking a picture?
Of course. He's been taking a picture, Jeanne, if you want me to share it with him. He's been taking a picture.
You guys want to come down?
Sure. Why not? I just wanted to say, if I can, how much I appreciate this, especially in the light of the thing. My name is Jean Marie Embler. I live in 21 Forest Place in Mount Tabor, New Jersey. In the light of everything that has taken place in the last week, we so much appreciate this. We need to help our community to be gun violence-free.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Yes, just one thing. On Thursday, I'll have the books for the Finance Committee for the budget, and then once those books are presented to them, we will be having a meeting next week with the Business Administrator, the CFO, myself, and our auditor. I'll be setting up the appointment with Frank Neglia, Councilman, right?
Sir, yes, sir.
All right, good. And Loretta Graniani, Council Vice President.
Thank you.
And then you will have the books next week sometime.
Okay, thank you. And the meeting after that, we will, we give the council some time to review the budget to see if there are any questions they have for department heads, then we will set up the meeting dates, however many we think we might need.
Okay, sounds good.
Any reports from the Township Council?
No.
No, person.
Township Attorney?
No.
Business Administrator?
So I have nothing.
Township Clerk?
No report at this time, thank you.
Township Officers, Committees, and Reports?
None at this time.
Okay, Town to Engineering Report, roll.
Green Bank Road Safety Improvements Project. The project is complete except for the guardrail replacement. Underground utilities could not be moved, but we have received approval from the NJDEP to adjust the stream bed to allow more space for the new guardrail installation. Work will begin in the next few months, once materials become available. No council action required. 2021 Road Resurfacing, Curb and Sidewalk Program. The annual Road Resurfacing, Curb and Sidewalk Project has stopped for the winter. Construction activities will commence in May. No council action required. Putting Stone Heights Road Improvement Project, Phase 1. Construction on the Putting Stone Heights Improvement Project is continuing. We anticipate the project being completed by the beginning of June. No council action required. Rockaway River Flood Wall Levy Inspection. An inspection was conducted of the Rockaway River Flood Wall Levy System. The report indicated the system is in good shape and recommended several maintenance and repair items that should be addressed. We are presently working with our consultant on preparing design details and a cost estimate for the repair work. All vegetation within five feet of the wall and toe of slope is being cleared in accordance with our inspection requirements. No council action required. Traffic Signal Maintenance for Littleton Road, Rita Drive, Beechwood Road, and the Jefferson Road and Smith Road Intersections. This project is for improvements and maintenance to traffic signals located in Littleton Road and Rita Drive, Beechwood Road Intersection, and the Jefferson Road and Smith Road Intersection. The improvements include the replacement of various signal detection and controller equipment that have failed. Work is anticipated to begin in mid-May. No council action required. Mount Tabor Street Improvements, Phase 7. The Mount Tabor Street Improvements, Phase 7 Project is in design. We anticipate bidding this project in late spring. No council action required. Lake Intervell Area Street Improvements. The first phase of the Lake Intervell Area Street Improvements Project is in design. We anticipate bidding the project in late spring. No council action required. Roadway Design Projects. The following projects are in design. Proposals have been requested. Drummond Drive Stream Cleaning, Jefferson Road Drainage Improvements, North Frederick Road Streetscape Improvements, Troy Brook Stream Cleaning, Sylvan Way Sidewalk Improvements, River and Stream, Desnagging Plans and Permits, Etten Road Traffic Study. No council action required.
Bids taken. Number one, 4/7/22 Supplying Pumps, Motors, Generators, HVAC Units, Boilers, Water Heaters, Water Storage Tanks, and Parts, Repairs for Various Departments. Item two, 4/13/2022, Lease of Public Property. Item B, to be taken, 5/12/22 Supply of Manic Polymer for the Wastewater Treatment Plant. Item two, 5/19/22 Well Development Services, Wells 3, 10, 4, and 4A, and Pumping System Replacements for Wells 3, 10, 4, and 4A. Item three, 5/20/2022 Veil Water Tank Painting and Rehabilitation. Item four, 5/25/2022 One New Roland RTW 540 Traffic Works 54 Traffic Sign Print slash Cut with CWT 1428 Work Table and Flatbed Applicator for Parks and Forestry Department. Item five, 5/25/22 Fabrication and Installation of New Wood Shutters at the Smith Baldwin House. Item six, 5/26/2022 Road Resurfacing, Curb and Sidewalk Program. Now I will entertain a motion to open this meeting to the public.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Musello. Roll call. Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Graniani.
Yes.
Mr. Musello.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
The floor is open to the public to speak on any matter.
You have five minutes. Come forward, sign and state your name and address.
So there, okay, so under which, got you. Not a problem. Pass it down. It stays together.
That's it? Everybody have one?
Fred don't have one.
Fred?
Fred doesn't have one.
Okay, I read the matter. You get it.
There you go. We have it.
My name is Maria Misana. I live at 25 Meadow Bluff Road. I've been a Parcipiny resident for 21 years and love it here, so. But I'm here tonight because I'd like to advocate for the proposed amendments to the zoning code regarding home occupations. In Parcipiny Troy Hills right now, it's been very challenging to have someone have a home occupation, so aka home business, with the cottage food rules that came into effect in October of 2021 at the state level. So applying even for like a simple home baking business, something that I'm pursuing, can cost actually thousands of dollars. After speaking to the zoning board, I've been going back and forth, so I just, it's, there's thousands of dollars in fees, attorney costs, in addition to requiring dozens of pages of paperwork. The proposal would make it easier for anyone to have a home business, provided it doesn't impact neighbors. I feel like this cottage food rule is helpful also. I've seen it be helpful to like the veterans, the disabled, the state-of-home moms. It makes it easy for them to work in an environment that they don't have to move out of their home. It's just helpful all around. I've been working on a commercial, of a commercial kitchen now for almost two years. I've done a ton of, ton, I shouldn't say ton. I've done about four fundraisers here in town with the Parcipiny Swim Team, the Mountain Lakes Middle School. I also did the teacher appreciation at the high school, and this, you know, having to pay the commercial kitchen, and I try to give back as much as I can, just because, you know, that's, it's what I do. So, as I say, oh, okay, so the, there's a summary of the proposed amendments to the current code follows. Specifically, expand the definition of a customary home occupation in Section 430-8 to include cottage food businesses and other harmless home businesses that are not a nuisance to neighbors. Make customary home occupations an accessory use in Section 430-66 instead of a conditional use in Section 430-67. This means people can have some occupations as a right instead of going through a burdensome application process. Impose additional requirements on home occupations, like restricted advertisement, no goods on display, and customer visits by appointment only, to make certain home occupations not a nuisance or harmful to neighbors. Delete the requirement that home occupations occupy only 30% of the first floor of a home. If a person uses their dining room table once a week to package goods that are sold, does the entire dining room count toward the 30%? It's probably best to just delete this requirement entirely. And finally, allowing zoning officers to shut down home occupations that do not comply with requirements and to also provide a right of appeal. There's some facts about the cottage food industry. Cottage food is safe. New Jersey regulators found no evidence of anyone anywhere getting sick from the home baked goods. Cottage food is local. When neighbors, when neighbors try to trade with neighbors, money stays in the local economy. Cottage food is transparent. People who buy from cottage food producer know that, what they can get. If they have questions about the ingredients, sourcing, or safety, they can ask. Cottage food creates jobs. Results in Minnesota show a potential economic impact. Within two years, the state granted more than 3,000 cottage food licenses, each representing a small business. By 2020, the number had swelled to 4,000. Cottage food empowers women. That's like, for me, it's like big. I grew up in Sicily, and it was really hard to make my statement, especially to my dad. By eighth grade, I was not allowed to go to school after that, when I graduated, and it was just, I was born in the United States, so I moved back, and you just want to make something of yourself, and, you know, I love my dad so much, but it was just, you know, he, it was just, that's the way it is in Sicily, you know? You have to fight for what you believe in, I guess. Cottage food expands consumer choice. Cottage food fills market gaps, giving consumers more options. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I hope you will consider and approve the proposed amendments to the zoning code to make my and other entrepreneurs in Parcipiny dreams of running a small business from our homes a Parcipiny a reality. To date, I was looking at the state website, and there are up to 469 businesses that have already been approved, 24 alone in Morris County, which I, that's the second page, that's not staple, says, I actually saw that one, one that was approved in Parcipiny, which I thought, I spoke to the gentleman, and he said he applied to the state, but it's a coffee, coffee roasting or something, and he said that it's Eldridge Coffee. He said, I can mention his name tonight, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I make a comment, Council President?
Go ahead.
Mrs. Misana, thank you for sharing your story. We greatly appreciate your commitment to starting a business, and it saddens me that there's obstacles that are getting in front of the way for you to go about in achieving your dream of becoming an entrepreneur. So I just wanted to say that whatever we can do on the part of the Township Council to remove those obstacles that are in front of you of starting that successful business is something that's important to me, and I am delighted to help.
Thank you.
For the administration, we should forward this to the Planning Board for review to see if items in there should be included in the new master plan, and if so, then based on those recommendations, the council can make ordinance changes. But the process is Planning Board to Council.
Okay, I agree, but what I would, what I would recommend is speaking to the zoning officer, number one, and number two, the health officer as well, because this is pertinent to these types of ordinances, because I guess you still have to file an application, and the application, if it's not a permitted use, you have to find out the reasons why it's not, I'm not saying it's not a permitted use, but there's health and there's all that stuff that's involved. So my recommendation is include the zoning officer, which would be, you know, Jennifer and then our health officer as well.
Well, she serves on the.
Yeah, I know she serves on the planning board, but.
If this were before them, she would have her.
Because we want, if we're going to change it, we want to get it right, because if you don't get it right, it becomes worse, in the sense that everybody will open up a home business, and when you try to open up a home business, it can be anything from bacon to catering to all that stuff, and there's requirements for all that, for that stuff as well. And this is, bacon's a lot different, but it can segue into that, so we have to be very careful.
That's why I recommended sending it to the Planning Board.
Right, agree.
The state website has the exact rules, for example, it's non-TCS products, so they have to be like non-refrigerator products and things like that, so there are specific restrictions that will need to be abided by.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one come forward?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Musello. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Graniani.
Yes.
Mr. Musello.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 2022:15, An Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parcipiny Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, Amending Chapter 119, Cannabis of the Code of the Township of Parcipiny Troy Hills. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at the meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parcipiny Troy Hills held on May 17, 2022, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on June 21, 2022, at 7:00 PM prevailing time or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above ordinance by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Graniani, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call. Ms. Graniani.
Yes.
You want to have some conversation first, before the roll call?
Okay, so we had a motion and a second, and.
And seconded, and our discussion.
Sure.
Okay. I just need to know where in Ordinance 2022:15, we're eliminating a distance restriction. I don't see it.
Council President, the, it may be a misnomer, a distance provision. If, there was a redlined version that was submitted today, I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at it, but it's really adding, making an exception from the distance provision, except for a cannabis distributor located in the SED 5A Zone District. So it carves out an exception from that distance restriction.
And is that Section 3, Paragraph A?
I believe it is.
Section.
Yeah, Section 5D. So it's Section 119 is the ordinance, subsection 5D is in David.
I don't have a D.
I said B, I'm sorry, it's B.
B I have, D I did not have. Okay, thank you. Just, just for the public's information, in 2020, when the township passed a marijuana ordinance, we prohibited growing marijuana, processing marijuana, or selling marijuana in Parcipiny Township. We only allowed two of the, of the six items that the classes, a Class 3 Cannabis Wholesale License we allowed, and a Class 4 Cannabis Distributor License we allowed, and that was it. They can move it through here, but they can't sell it here, they can't grow it here, and they can't process it here, just so everybody can be aware of what we're doing. In this, in this case now, there is a, a company who wants to utilize, I guess, a warehouse to do either the wholesaler or the distributor, I'm not sure which, and that portion is legal in our township. Okay? Everybody up on it? All right, now we can have the roll call.
Motion made by Ms. Graniani, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Graniani.
Yes.
Mr. Musello.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2022:11, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 405 Vehicles and Traffic, Section 11, Stopping or Standing Prohibited on Certain Streets of the Code of the Township of Parcipiny Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey. The notice for Ordinance 2022:11 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parcipiny Troy Hills, on April 25, 2022, and introduced at the April 19, 2022 Regular Meeting. Motion to accept Ordinance 2022:11, be heard in their second and final reading by title only, made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musello, seconded by Ms. Graniani. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Graniani.
Yes.
Mr. Musello.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Okay. And I'd also like to make a motion to open the public hearing for Ordinance 2022:11, made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musello, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Graniani.
Yes.
Mr. Musello.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Public hearing is open. Anyone can speak on this ordinance only.
Seeing nobody come forward, I'll entertain a motion to close on Ordinance 2022:11 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musello, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Graniani.
Yes.
Mr. Musello.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for Ordinance 2022:11, made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call. Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2022:12. Bond Ordinance Providing for Various Capital Acquisitions and Improvements for the Sewer Utility of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, and the County of Morris, State of New Jersey, Appropriating $1,980,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,980,000 bonds or notes of the township to finalize the costs thereof. The Notice for Ordinance 2022:12 was publicized in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, on April 25, 2022, and introduced at the April 19, 2022 regular meeting. Motion to accept the Ordinance 2022:12, to be heard in their second and final reading by title only, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call. Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2022:12. Bond Ordinance Providing for Various Capital Acquisitions and Improvements for the Sewer Utility of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, and the County of Morris, State of New Jersey, Appropriating $3,180,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,980,000 bonds or notes of the township to finalize the costs thereof. The Notice for Ordinance 2022:12 was publicized in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, on April 25, 2022, and introduced at the April 19, 2022 regular meeting. Motion to accept the Ordinance 2022:12, to be heard in their second and final reading by title only, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call. Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.